We'll just go ahead and get started with the work session and we'll start with Ms. Mazer and the Personnel Rules, Policies and Procedures, specifically Section 4.06, the section on on-call employees.
Right. Yes. As you know, earlier this year, the mayor appointed a committee to take a look at the employee handbook overall and come up with some recommendations to bring to her and to the council. And we are on our fourth draft and have not yet gotten it to her for her input and review. But there is this issue that has survived all four of the drafts to date that has to deal with on-call. And it's an inequity that we felt we didn't want to wait until such time as we're ready to bring the entire book to you because we didn't want to do it piecemeal. But this, we felt, should not wait for another six or maybe nine months before we're ready to have a product for you all to look at and to give us input. As you know, the handbook does call for utility employees to be on-call and to be compensated accordingly. That is the only department that is being compensated for being on-call. Public Works and IT are not. They're not mentioned in the book. And we, from day one, looking at the handbook, had determined that those two departments needed to be added because they are basically doing that, but they're not being treated equitably with utilities. So we made the decision to break our little rule and bring this one forward to you to consider now, to get things fixed, so to speak. So Richard had set up a rotation program for Public Works, and I'll let him explain how he sees this working.
And I'll share this with you, and I, this is actually a memo that we prepared about a year ago. I'm going to take one and pass it around. And it was just trying to figure out a mechanism. You know, as it works today, we assign a supervisor on a weekly rotation to be the point of contact. We don't say stand by and on-call since we don't qualify for that. But meaning that if there is a need that is related to public works, whether it be a road issue, a drainage issue, a building issue, possibly a park issue, dispatcher call contacts that supervisor and that supervisor's expect to receive that call. And if we can coordinate with the paid person on-call from utilities to get the problem addressed, we'll try to do that. We luckily do have a sanitation person that works some hours on the weekend. If it's during that time period, if that person can handle that, we try to do it where it has the least budget and lifestyle impact on our employees. But in reality, rarely a week goes by that a public works person does not get an after-hours on-call. And understand, one of the challenges is our supervisors are all exempt employees, meaning that they don't even qualify for call-in pay at that point in time, meaning that they go and address it and so be it. Now, if the problem is to the extent we have to bring in an hourly employee to operate a piece of equipment, they are guaranteed two hours minimum or the actual time during the on-call. And my proposal to the mayor at that time was that there is a recognition that utilities are going to have more frequencies of call-in due to power service issues or gas service issues, water, sewer. And assuming that Public Works probably only represents 50% of the after-hour on-calls compared to utilities, you know, my recommendation at that time is how do we handle the exempt employees? And my recommendation, we have five supervisors in Public Works in a rotation that for every cycle that they participate in, they earn four hours of comp time. Now, as far as budget dollars, that's neutral. Now, of course, that person probably will take that time off, so you won't have that person here. And that if it is an hourly person, it would be 50% of what's given to the utilities. They get 16 hours of additional pay for a week of being on-call. My recommendation for Public Works would be eight hours. On the building maintenance, since, understand, if there's a building issue, regular Public Works can't deal with that. That's going to be handled by Lance and his staff, and they have a total of six people on staff. So they have a one-in-six rotation. And my recommendation on building maintenance, since that the pool of personnel is so small that they would be noted equivalent to utilities on-call with the supervisor, it's his week, would be the same four hours of comp time since he's an exempt employee. And just want to, you know, get y'all's input and feeling, it's tough because when the expectation is, is that that employee during that week has got to be available and they can't plan any activities that involve them going out of town on the week that their, weekend of their assignment. And they, you know, they can't enjoy a cold drink during a football game on Saturday if it's their week because there's a chance they get a call-in and we can't have them consuming adult beverages that time. So they get that burden placed on them, but they don't get any opportunity for compensation. And we'd like to at least correct that in the handbook so it picks up both IT, which, you know, there are that, and as well as Public Works' call-ins.
Let me ask you just on Public Works, I want to make sure I understand this right. They would be given eight hours per weekend of comp time? And so roughly, if they're on a five-week rotation, they're roughly working 10 weekends or on-call, 10 weekends a year?
That's correct.
Roughly 10.4. So they would essentially wind up with 80 hours of comp time a year. Is that right?
No, I have it complete with four hours of, let's see, I may make sure.
Four hours per day, right?
Well, I may have said this wrong. I proposed comp time with about half a day for every weekend assigned on-call.
Oh, every weekend, I'm sorry. I had it as weekend.
It says every weekend.
Half that, so cut that in half.
Okay, yes. So I say it was resulting 40 hours of flexible comp time for the year if they worked 10 cycles.
That's what I meant. Okay, that's why I asked to make sure I understand.
And I may need to check my number agreement in there and make sure.
That's probably accurate. I had it per weekend.
Whereas if it was an hourly employee, it would just be eight hours of regular overtime for that, or regular pay for that week's cycle that they signed.
Well, actually, no. If you look on the backside of what you handed out under compensation, it does say, well, first sign, experienced operators, they should be compensated for four hours of on-call standby, standby pay for each weekend day.
Which is eight hours total for...
So eight hours per weekend.
Yes. And that's half of what utilities are currently receiving. And I think, considering that the chances of being called in, about 50% of utilities, that seems equitable to me.
Nope. Come back to what I thought it says.
Two weeks of extra vacation.
Says four hours of on-call standby pay for each weekend day or eight total. That's eight total per weekend.
That's correct. Eight additional hours where right now, for Public Utilities, get 16 hours. So that's the...
So then you go eight, then it's on 10 weekends, so that's still, that's back to eight hours.
Well, I'm talking about two different things. An hourly employee would get four hours per weekend day for eight hours for a cycle, meaning that they're on from Monday to Monday. Their paycheck would have 48 hours of regular time unless they're called in and the time would calculate accordingly. If they're a salary-exempt, my recommendation is a half a day for every weekend, which is a Saturday and Sunday.
So exempt is half a day?
That's correct.
Forty hours.
Yeah.
For those that are paid, it's eight hours for a weekend.
That's correct.
But that's pay, not comp time.
That's correct.
Basically giving them an extra eight hours of straight pay.
That's correct.
What happens if you need more than, I mean, I'm looking at the Public Works teams, there's two, two per team. What happens when you need to call out more? Are those people paid?
No. Basically, if we get into a response situation to something that's bigger than either the primary or their back, or their assigned experienced operator, then we result to normal operations, meaning we get on the phone and whoever is available and ready, they come in, they're going to get guaranteed two hours minimum, even if it only takes...
Okay, so they're getting paid, right?
They're going to get paid, yeah. And if we end up working eight hours, that's going to calculate on their time card as overtime if they're, for every hour over 40 in a given week, so.
That's pretty much an emergency situation when that happens.
Yes, I mean, you know, you go back and look at the flood event of 2014, we probably, you know, I was in Daphne, but we probably ended up calling in 16, 17 people to close roads and managed it. And they were just, it just calculated as, and it was, are you available and are you capable? Yes, come on in.
Counsel, do you have any final questions about this?
I think it looks good. Appreciate all the time and effort and detail.
How often, you pretty much get called in about every weekend?
It's inconsistent. I was on a week ago and got zero calls. Arthur got three. And this last week, they finished today. So, you know, it just, you never know.
Law averages.
Yes.
Kevin and Jay, if you haven't seen this, we're just talking about editing the employee handbook to include four hours of comp time for every weekend that exempt salary employees on-call. And there was no change to the paid employee, right?
Well, my recommend...
I don't have the before and after either.
Well, there is, there is, the only thing an hourly employee gets in Public Works if they're called in, right now they're guaranteed two hours. Okay? Now, if they're called in and it takes three hours, they get paid three hours. Once it passes two, it gets actual time worked. Where what this does is that it compensates them for giving up their weekend to stay based at home and available to the phone and making sure that they're behaving. It gives them an additional eight hours of regular time added to their paycheck. But understand, if that employee gets called in three times, okay, and that three times exceeds eight hours, then it just calculates as whatever it is, meaning that you don't get the double dip, meaning that...
That's correct. That's how it does.
You know, anything above 40, you have to pay overtime. So the on-call would be at an overtime rate.
Well, I've always understood that overtime only calculates for anything after 40 hours physically working.
That's correct.
Meaning that if, let's say you're on-call and you're an hourly employee in Public Works and you all proved this, if nobody calls that seven days, then your check will have 48 hours of regular pay. But if you came in and you worked your regular 40 and you got called in one time and you spent four hours, it actually would calculate at 44 hours of regular pay and four hours of overtime.
We've been doing it all.
Because you would physically work for 44 hours. Did I say that right?
I don't think we've been doing it. Have we been doing it that way? Okay.
But you don't get the four hours overtime plus the eight hours. It backs off that eight hours.
Now, back when you introduced this, did you not say Public Works and I didn't say IT as well?
Well, IT is getting called in and I don't, I can't speak for them. I don't know if they're getting compensated, but the employee handbook does not include them in on-call, standby.
But they do get called in.
I don't know that you're going to, you're not going to have enough for five teams, right?
Well, see, they work remotely. They have an entirely different scenario, so it's not like they have to go out somewhere.
So what's the proposal from the IT department?
We don't have one. What you got was what we have in draft four, and we don't have an absolute proposal from IT. I don't think Jeff even knows that we're discussing them tonight. Surprise, Jeff. What I sent over to Lisa was what we have in draft four, and it does include IT, which in my mind was going to work up the same way utilities was working up. But, see, they're so different because they work remotely in most of their cases.
If they work four, if they get called in after a 40-hour week, they're on-call, and they get called in and work four hours, you said they're going to get paid 44 hours of regular time?
Well, there's...
Four hours of overtime?
And Jill may want to jump in here. As I understand it, overtime only calculates based upon physical time physically working during a work week. So meaning that, is my understanding, it's just my understanding, is that if you have worked your normal 40-hour shift Monday through Friday and you get called in and you're on-call and you were scheduled to get eight hours of pay whether you got called or not, if you end up working four hours, your physical time on the clock becomes 44 hours.
I'm with you now.
And then you back that four hours out of the eight, but those four should calculate as overtime, time and a half, because you have physically worked more than 40 hours in that paid week.
I'm with you now. I didn't follow the eight hours.
According to Nancy, the emergency call-out and the on-call are separate. They're mandatory OT. So you could have zero worked hours, but if you get on-call, an emergency call-out, you have to pay overtime.
I understand it right now. Well, it sounds like, though, if you are a non-exempt employee and you're on-call and you don't get a call any, you're going to get paid eight hours of overtime, right? Because it's...
Eight hours of overtime.
Eight hours.
You're going to get eight hours.
That's how I understand it, yes.
If you get called out for two hours, you're going to get six hours of straight time and two hours of overtime.
That's how, if you've worked 40 during your regular Monday through Friday job, yes.
Let me ask you this, it says they would be non-exempt again, compensated four hours of on-call standby, standby pay for each weekend day. Is there a chance that they wouldn't be on-call for one weekend day or is it always going to be? I mean, because the exempt states it slightly differently. It says four hours for every weekend. Why doesn't it just say eight hours for every weekend as opposed to four hours for each weekend day?
And again, I will clean that up. It is, there are a number of confusing there, yeah. I used weekend days and then weekend.
Well, you can have Sunday off now or something.
No, my intent is that if you're hourly, your compensation would be an eight-hour addition to your paycheck for that week you're on-call. If you're salary, you would earn four hours of comp time for that same week being on-call. And I talked to my supervisors about this before I drafted this memo a year ago, and every one of them said that the 50 cents on the dollar time off was more valuable than actual money to them. I mean, so, which I thought was a good, trying to be sensitive to the budget.
It is, but is it, does it create a shortfall when you need it? I mean, there's two sides to that, too.
Considering the number of our senior supervisors that leave vacation on the table every year, you know, it's a little sneaky on my part is how much of it will actually ever get used. I don't know.
Nope, I'd have to be careful, so.
Well, I mean, I admire guys that like to work, but, you know, we do have a program where you have, you can, you can't carry vacation after a certain point, so, you know...
Try to edit to have an allocated amount since we typically approve up to a certain amount.
So, it's about 416. It's about 416 hours for a non-exempt, roughly, you just call it 208 hours for, two hour, 208 hours of comp time given, right? 52 times four. And then 416 hours of pay. We don't know how much of that would be OT or not.
No, because it's always, yeah, and plus, different people make different amounts, so.
Kevin and Jay.
This is more, the way I look at it, this is more like a change, everything worked pretty good, put it in place and see what happens. It's kind of a plan in the works. What about, like, several times, I've been taking on-call, it ain't cost y'all a dime for the last three years.
Well, appreciate that.
I know y'all didn't. But just say I get called in and it's an air conditioner at the jail, which is a real likely call. Last week we had a fire, a light go fire over there. I come in, I'm going to get half a day for comp time. But what if I'm there 12 hours trying to get that air conditioner back? And that's happened over several times.
I don't think you need to be selling yourself right now. I think you have it sold.
But I'm just saying, you know, is there, you know, why would I answer the telephone for four hours if I'm called 12 hours?
Richard?
Don't you get overtime for the time actually worked?
Well, no, and I understand that's, that's the tough part with exempt employees is that, you know, and this is the reality, is that you are, you are paid a salary to the job. If it takes you 60 hours in the week to do that job, then so be it. Theoretically, if the next week it only takes you 30, so be it. As long as you're accomplishing your job, you know, you're being compensated for it. I'm just trying to at least give, and that may be a flaw of the structure of Public Works, is all of our supervisors are exempt employees, which I think, to me, is a good thing because many of them work more than eight hours a day because they're committed to their job and, you know, and things of that nature, and there's a value to that. So, I mean, this is better, I think, you know, now, of course, if I was Lance, I would make sure that my AC tech who's an hourly employee, I would probably, if I, once I come to a conclusion, it's going to be a long, drawn-out process, I'd have that person in there handling that because they have a mechanism to get at least compensated for actual time on the job, so.
But you can't give them, you're the guy, you're it. You can't give anybody.
Right. Again, that's, you know...
When we have, we pay them on-call, you know, we're not paying them anything because I can't make them, I can't make them answer that telephone weekly.
Well, that's, that's where we come, that's why we're here, to get the hourly employees compensated for...
This one, this one addresses it.
Yeah, that's going to take care of that, yeah.
They says they must be available by cell, text, and or hard-line phone.
And as I understand it, you set up a rotation for people to serve for these on-call weekends so they don't have a choice in the end and they'll get compensated.
Yeah. Now, what he said was he is the on-call guy.
But Lance, we've already got, he's finally got a staff big enough where they can have a rotation so that, and he's got to let them be in that rotation. Now, granted, the, one of the challenges with building maintenance is that he has a person who is a really good plumber, he has a person whose expertise is electrical, he has a person that's HVAC. Now, granted, I could see where the problem at hand may be HVAC and the electrical guy is the guy on-call. At that point in time, there's going to have to be a conversation among their department. Are you available? Can you come in? And yes, it may be that the supervisor, who is the master of all those trades, may end up in there to trouble shoot and do the problem.
It puts me involved just about everything. Like, or if I got called last week for a time, it rolled me in, so then, you know, I had to take it. And that's fine.
That's a good scenario, though. That's a good example of a flaw, but...
It's not perfect.
But I think it's an improvement.
Yes.
Something to work on. I mean, something to build a base from.
Would there be a problem, say, if I did work more than four hours, could I at least get comp time for the remainder of the time that I work?
The way I'm seeing this, the way it's written, it doesn't provide for that.
I don't think for exempt because I think that's the mentality that, you know, your salary didn't, you're likely going to work more than 40 hours. I mean, that's kind of the way supervisors are done.
I see what you're, I mean, I hear what you're saying, though. You have a 60-hour week and...
We not have any HVAC subcontractors that are called in for anything? If you can give them, you know, because if we can come in and take care of it and it costs us $800, if we bring in a train, it's going to cost us five, six thousand dollars possibly. And so, I mean, we have kept the contract divided. Y'all, we have paid a tremendous amount of money.
But you're saying that with the help that you have in your department, they can't take on some of this if we change the, this aspect?
Yes. They can take it on. Say if Cody is on-call, I can make him carry his phone and he's got to be available for that weekend. I haven't had it by group hours.
Right, that's what we're trying, now you're getting it. That's the verbal signal.
And Lance, since all of your people are hourly, they're going to get dollar compensation for being on-call.
There you go.
And if they're physically here, they get compensated above and beyond that based upon the time in, as long as it exceeds eight hours.
But if Kevin's on-call and there's an HVAC guy and Cody isn't on-call, I'm going to get that call.
Well, that's being a supervisor, Lance.
Y'all, how many times? I'm going to call their valet.
I'm going to let you sit over here in my seat, I'm going to go over there.
Well, it's tough to say.
It's hard to say. I've seen it both ways, guys. I mean, to be honest with you, you know, I'm an exempt employee in my job. And I've had weeks where I've worked 80 hours and got no compensation, and then sometimes they'll approve it. Sometimes they'll approve overtime. We don't get overtime pay with the straight time, but I've seen both, I've seen both arguments, lived through both arguments, so. I guess what I would maybe just suggest at this time is to see how this works. I mean, things can always change.
That's right. Can we revisit it?
It's a step in the right direction and it's...
It is a step towards compensating you for that additional time.
Yeah, and it's giving Lance the tool he needs to make sure his guys are available when assigned.
Yeah, and I know that probably the law of averages, you know, even if you go three weekends of being on-call and you don't get called in, there's going to be that weekend where you spend, you know, 12 hours a day, you know, and probably will maybe more than make up for that. But hopefully this is at least a lesson in the blood. Anybody else? I do sympathize with Lance, though, with the work. And I do think that the things brought up, as you do have a unique situation where you have specialty people on-call.
And I can tell you how many times I looked in to see Daddy and drove 110 miles back down.
Is there a, is there a possibility that in your department, instead of having weekends where there are people on-call, you know, like, if you were the only one qualified to handle every type of call, do we need to consider weekends where you don't have somebody on-call, where you just have to call a plumber?
I've got that one set up, too. I mean, we've got...
Depending on what you call.
But then, see, that comes into another whole issue there. Without being able to carry, have an open PO available at that point, we can't just call over, really, because we don't have...
Well, we're getting ready to change that to pink hearts.
And we've been meeting, as between utilities and all of us, talk about, you know, trying to be more efficient and use the city's resources better. I mean, just about every employee that we have should be able to operate a plunger and to get an on-call to plunge a toilet. It took five minutes to do this when four people came by and said that wasn't their job, that we're being paid to be there. We're working better to be better at that because, you know, by golly, I'd have come down here and plunged it if I was close by.
Is that a real-world scenario or that really happened?
So, and frankly, there also has to be a judgment call that sometimes it's okay to put a sign on that toilet door that says out of order, be repaired on Monday. I mean...
That's right.
We don't really need to spend a whole bunch of money to, and there's a good chance that we can't get the part until Monday anyway, if it's about or something. So we've just got to be a little, we've got to be better on our side, too, and be more proactive, so.
Especially those on weekends, you know, things like that, yeah. I mean, this day and age, go use the opposite sex as reference. That's probably good.
Thank you.
All right. Wait a minute. What I think I was hearing was agreement, Clark.
Yes.
I'll get my number agreement lined up and...
We'll put something together for you to take a look at for a resolution. Ordinance, yes, excuse me, it is an ordinance.
Okay. Budget. Mr. Cortinas.
Sir. All right, Mayor, Council. I'm going to ask Jill to scroll through that for me and go through, budget-wise...
Okay, immunisits 001130.
Yes.
Or you can go to page 16.
Page 1130?
Yes. Where am I going?
Just as, well, if you have any questions. Really, the only thing that's terribly out of the ordinary, our training costs went up because we have additional certifications through the inspectors that have been obtained. And we all have CEU requirements for those certifications. So the training costs went up a little bit because we're paying for those certifications, they benefit the city, and they have to go to classes to obtain the CEUs for it. I have one item that's out of the ordinary. I have one item that's out of the ordinary. I had requested, and tell me, I believe it's still in there, for the scanning of the documents. Okay. Yes. Just so you know, and I did this for you guys. We have in our office what we refer to as the Tube Wall. You might have... Robert might have seen it. On the back, this is... These are records and documents that we have paper copies of. And those things date back to the 70s or 80s. And it takes up a tremendous amount of space. Now, the first page you see is the actual Tube Wall that's got all those documents on it. The follow-on pages are the boxes of permit files that we have to keep in the office because we're still getting... We're still having to go back into those files instead of taking them to archive because we're in them so much. I had spoken to... I know Lisa and I had both spoken to a scanning contractor that's on the state bid. They came and looked at it and they will come from Tallahassee, scan all those documents, pull them apart, scan them, put them... Save them electronically for us, index them, and then destroy the documents. So, we'll have everything electronic that you see on that very first page. And that's a little out of the ordinary. I normally don't have that in there. But that cost was for the... For what we have that you see in those photos was $21,000. Come pick them up, take them back, straighten them out, scan them in, index them, and then destroy them.
They would be searchable, too?
Yes, they would be searchable. And everything we'd be able to get to it, yes.
Didn't we add also the museum and some of Lisa's things?
Yeah.
Okay, same company.
And actually...
Their own department.
Yes, and let you know, the planning department also had, I think, $4,000 or $5,000 in their budget. And I know, I don't think that was brought up or much of an issue for them. This is all the same contractor. We just happen... I know Lisa's probably got a lot of records, too. But we just have a lot of stuff. And it's old and we'd like to get it electronically so we can save it.
It'll be a huge help for Lisa, though, being searchable.
I mean, where is that expense, once again? Is that in...
Is that in the capital with the truck? Is that in the same...
You're talking about the scanning?
Yes.
It's in the professional services.
Professional services, okay.
Is that scanning and destruction? It's in account 50290.
Yes.
In Immunis, go to that detail.
I don't... I was looking on page 16. Oh, there it is. There it is. No, I see it now.
And in that same section that you're looking at, if you look on the screen, they have that ICC Plan Review Services. That is the as-needed on-call if we have a major project that's going to take quite a while to review. We keep that in there, but that is also a pass-through account. Whatever the cost is that we have from the International Code Council to do those reviews, we collect from the applicant. Now, we have not used that at all this year. We used it for the Retreat at Fly Creek apartment project. We wanted that reviewed by them. There may be one upcoming project potentially that I may want to send to them just because they are the code-writing agency and I want to make sure all Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. But that amount is only spent if we choose to send something there and then it is collected back immediately from the applicant when they're paying their permit and inspection fees. So, it's budgeted in there so you don't... So, you'll see it if I send it, but it zeroes itself out.
Now, I can't get on that detail. Jill, won't let you go there when I click on that? I don't have access to Account Central. So, I'm just trying to go to that detail of the scanning, the $46,000. How much was that, Eric?
It was $25,000 for the ICC service and then $21,000 for the scanning. The only exact cost that we know we're going to have is the 21 for the scanning. The 25 is just an as-needed if we choose to use that service.
And the ICC was the what?
That's the International Code Council. They're the code-writing agency and they have a plan review service.
Does that need to be in the budget?
I think we do it so that when we get a $7,000 or $8,000 purchase order from the ICC, it's accounted for in the budget. But like I said, as soon as we charge it, we collect it. So, it really kind of zeroes itself out.
I got you.
Yeah.
What... I'll be honest with you, that scanning service, I am shocked at how low that is.
They came in and I walked him through. I... You know what? Let's...
What kind of guarantees do they get? That they're not, you know... Because if they scan it and destroy it...
Yes.
And then you're looking for it and it doesn't exist.
Well, I would assume what we're going to inventory, anything we send them. If they're going to come pick it up, we're going to log it in. A lot of that stuff you see is already logged in, but it's under access. We've had it in that access file forever. And we've got a log of most of that. We're going to tally what we're sending them. And I'm going to, you know, probably tell them, "Do not destroy it until you send us the files and we actually spend the time to double-check." Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
And they'll categorize it according to year or numbers?
Yeah, the way that we... Well, if you look at the way that Tube File is organized, you've got sections A through Z. And then within each section, it's 1 through 30 or 40, however many tubes are in there. So, we have a spreadsheet that says Plan Number A21 is... That's the as-builts for Gayfer Estates. And so, that's how it's catalogued and it's written on the plan. So, when they send it to us, they're going to scan them by the same document number. They'll say A26, as-builts, Gayfer Estates. And it's going to be through that whole set of documents is how they'll index it for us.
What about year-to-year to maintain?
Well, yeah, what we're doing now is I'm requiring... And, you know, planning department receives all of their stuff now electronically, anyway. And we have started the same. We're not doing it with residential yet, but we are doing it with anything commercial or multifamily. They're sending me those plans electronically and I'm saving those on the file so I have them. And we're going to start indexing those the same way. So, we've got them for significant projects. Yeah. And once... If you have any questions about that, I've just got one other item that I'll mention to you if you're... Yes, sir.
So, that International Code, the $25,000... And I apologize for asking this again, ma'am.
No, sir.
I found a multitasking.
Sure.
And this, and this, and this.
That's okay.
The... We have employed them for some, I believe, some drawing review services?
Yes, sir.
Is that the same?
It's same one, same one.
If you just put it in a budget, it may or may not be...
May or may not be used. And even if we do use it, like I said, it zeroes out. So, whatever they charge us, we turn around and we charge immediately to the applicant.
You charge what it saves on labor.
That... Yeah, and it's really big projects like those of that apartment complex at Fly Creek. That was a pretty detailed set of plans. And it would have kind of slowed us down on reviewing other folks that had submitted stuff. So, we sent it to them, plus we wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything funky in those plans that we didn't catch. So, we got, you know, a good plan review back from them on all components and it was well worth it.
Were you... I was going to say, were you pleased with their results?
Yes, sir.
You felt like they were thorough and it wasn't too cookie cutter?
Well, it's... Yes, no. I was pleased with the results. There were a few things that we still have to review because we have city-specific requirements above and beyond what's in the International Code. So, we still look at it for those items. But the big items, the structural, the mechanical and all of that, it was a pretty good set of plans. And I think, you know, if you're in construction, if you can start with a good set of plans, it makes that project so much easier instead of trying to piecemeal plans together. So, I think it's worth it. And we didn't... We had that same money in this year. I didn't use it at all. We didn't send anything to them. We handled everything in-house. I will tell you that if and when they come to me with a boutique hotel in our downtown fire district, I'll probably want to send that to the ICC. I want them to take a look at it, too.
Questions, Council?
And the only other item personnel-wise, I requested a new title position created. We're having a lot of interaction with different utility companies. We're talking to Baldwin EMC and to Riviera and to the city utilities. And we have an excellent electrical inspector and very knowledgeable electrical inspector on staff. And he's been handling a lot of those interactions. But his title, as are all of the inspectors in the department, is Building Inspector. But he's, you know, representing the city at a lot of these meetings and he's doing a lot of things for us. And to help him, you know, in his interaction and to kind of, you know, give him a proper title for what he's actually doing for us, I would like to create that Chief Electrical Inspector position. That's fairly typical. If you go to a lot of other building departments, they have chief inspectors. That one's a big deal because that's a very technical field. And he's very, very good at what he does and I'd like to have that. And my intention is to promote from within. I don't need another person in the office. I'd like to have him fill that position with his ability and his knowledge.
All right, I got a couple more questions. And this is really splitting hairs as far as the overall budget. It's a tiny number...
Yes, sir.
...of the entire budget, but it's a big number for what it is.
Understood.
The credit card processing fees. $18,000 worth of fees in the building department?
Well, and I'm going to assume, because I don't handle the credit card... You don't want me handling the credit card machine. But we take credit card payments for permits and tap fees. So, when someone comes in and they've got $15,000 in, you know, tap and building permit fees, that is... And they put it on a credit card. And that's happening a lot with... Especially with big fees. I guess you get points on that. You get, you know, frequent flyer miles. So, that's happening a lot. And what that would reflect would be the size of the permits and the fees that we are actually collecting.
But we wrote an ordinance years ago when someone pays our utility bill, I think it was maybe an electric bill, if it exceeded a certain amount...
Mm-hmm.
That we... I believe we would not take credit card payments for that.
Really?
I remember the one was, I believe this was...
Charge them 10% like most of these restaurants are.
Well, we were actually looking at...
Okay.
Which one of those is required to... Over a certain amount, we do not take credit cards. And I believe that's...
Or just charge them the fee.
We have an ordinance.
To charge the fee?
Yeah, charge the fee.
Well, we don't have an ordinance yet, but that was something that I talked to Kim about.
I mean, they're getting the benefit of charging them a credit card.
Right. I mean, a lot of places are sharing that expense, but we do have...
Yeah, and I can't speak knowledgeably to that.
Well, we need to look up the... Do you know the current ordinance, Kim, that I'm talking about?
I do not, but what I am looking at is to be able to pass that on for them to pay a convenience fee.
Sure.
And, I mean, what I'm familiar from the side I came from about building permits is they pay that fee if they want those permits.
Okay, sure. That'd be fine.
It would be a long process. But, yeah, I've looked at, you know, like the golf course, the marina, you know, those kind of things that we could be able to have that convenience fee. On the utilities, you're getting a utility rate which is cheaper. And then that way, you cannot pass that utility rate on to your customers. And so, the conversations I had with the mayors, I wouldn't change that. But I wouldn't change these other outliers that are not a utility.
Okay.
We need to...
But I've looked up that, you know, at least...
Yeah, it's not like we had a lot of turnover. We need to look at... We have an ordinance. I want to make sure we get in case that requires...
And if that's the case...
It was like our really big commercial... I want to say it was maybe none of the schools, the Board of Education was paying tens of thousands of dollars. And they were using a credit card. And I believe that we require them now to do a bank draft or something such as that. So, we need to dig that up.
If you want, and I'll talk to Gina, Cindy, and Martha about it. They're probably... Even if there's... What's a percentage that you pay on a credit card?
Two and a half to three.
Two and a half to three? If you'd like, I mean, it's fairly easy. I can go back to our permit fee ordinance and we can add a line in there about it and give them the option.
It just has to be set up. We could do a pass-through or...
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, that's... I just need to know so that we can... Because currently, our ordinance does not have any provision for that.
But it has to be in ordinance. It has to be in ordinance.
Yeah, our fees are set by ordinance.
The rates and front fees. You know, and I hate to get...
Oh, no, that's fine.
...too detailed, but in your budget, $18,000 equals, you know, five or six categories of expenses.
No, true, true. Yeah, if I can save $18,000, I'm happy to.
And then on building fees, what is a building fee?
Okay, help me out on that.
That's those pass-through account with the state of Alabama.
Oh, yes, yes. The state of Alabama requires that we collect a $1 per thousand in value fee and give it... Send it back to the state. We do that on a monthly basis for the construction industry training system. And they use that money to go to junior colleges to encourage technical classes for framing and mechanical and plumbing and electrical. And that's mandated by the state of Alabama for everything. So, it's a pass-through. Yes, sir. It's a pass-through.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Back again. Good evening.
I'm starting with Streets.
Yeah, and if I could, I do want to hit just a couple of quick high points. I do want you to know, from top to bottom in Public Works, there is no ask for additional employees in any of these budgets. However, in sanitation, we do have an ask to convert four existing positions. Three of them are equipment operator, three, and one of them is already a crew leader, to be to the updated crew leader position. When I say updated, I'll hand you out the job description. It used to say trash crew leader and it needs to say sanitation crew leader since we have garbage, trash, recycle, and landfill operation. That is about an $8,500 annual for those four positions for that change. And that's in the budget. Just as a 30,000 scope view for the operational side, Streets is proposing this budget compared to last year's budget, meaning what was approved last year is a 4% increase. For sanitation, it's a minus 1.2% decrease compared to last year's budget. Building maintenance is the one that's going to freak you out a little bit because if you do that math, it's a 58% increase. And you'll see that most of that increase is in personnel. But you heard me just say, there's no ask for personnel. Understand that the positions in building maintenance, several of them lived in the utilities' budget.
Two.
This year, they have been moved to their proper home and are being accounted for that way. So, that is, there's no additional employee. It's just being accounted for in a different... lo, in the proper location of building maintenance. And then mechanical maintenance from the operational side is a decrease of point six percent. So that's a big thing. The other thing I, I want you to, this is an anomaly that when you have a pretty large employee base, if the, most of the drivers of any increase here are the salaries. But if you go back and look at, for example, streets department, twenty seventeen, we only used eighty-six percent of the actual budget salaries. Twenty eighteen, it was eighty-nine point five percent. In twenty nineteen, if, if the projections hold true, it's ninety-two percent. Same as in sanitation, those numbers vary anywhere from ninety-five point five to ninety point six to eighty-five percent of actual versus budgeted. Why is that? And I, I want you to kind of understand this because it may give you an idea. From a budgetary standpoint, we have to budget as if every position is filled every day and they work three hundred and sixty-five days a year. When you have a staff of nearly eighty, that never actually really happens in the real world. For example, right now in public works, our average for the last two, three years is about a fifteen percent turnover, meaning that we replace approximately twelve employees annually. And it takes about six weeks to replace an employee. So if you take six weeks times twelve, that's, that's seventy-two weeks of those, those employees not physically being here, being paid. Unfortunately, we run about two pi, two point five percent of our total staff is on FMLA or workers' compensation at any given time in the year. That, that works out to be approximately two employees. Right now, we have two employees out, one on FMLA, one is out on workers' comp. They are not drawing salaries, meaning that budget line is not impacted while they're on that leave. So if you take that, that, that represents another hundred and four weeks. That's a hundred and seventy-six weeks of, of, of pay that really doesn't get expended if, if the numbers hold true, which represents about an average that we, we don't have about three point four employees on average physically working on any given week, which is about four point two five percent of a workforce. That kind of explains to you why that number always trends around about five percent less than actual. So just, just keep that in mind, we have to budget the full cost of full employment. Now, when you get to a small department that has five people, you don't see that variance. But when you have a large department, you're just going to see it, it's normal. We have turnover, especially in our frontline jobs and things of that nature. So starting in streets, as I said, there's a, there's a four point oh three percent increase over last year's budget. The majority of that does reside in salaries. If the trend holds true that I just discussed, then it's, it's pretty much even to last year. Really, there's, there's, the, the increases that you will see in there is that there is an increase in flowers and street materials and landscape. And that is just, the fact is that this year we'll have more planted flower beds than we did a year ago, which was more than a year before that. And I feel like that we have been self-performing more services within the city, fixing sidewalks, drainage and things of that nature. And thus that does lead to increased materials and landscaping supplies in that area. The only other thing that you probably will stick out to you under professional services, even though the ask last year was at about twenty-five and some change, our actual is about thirteen and some change, and that's really not going to change, but we're back to asking for twenty-seven. Remember, our bridge inspection is required every other year, so this is a bridge inspection year. And that contract last year was about thirteen and a half thousand dollars. So that's why we're back at that twenty-seven. It should decrease every other year by that thirteen and a half, it just wasn't picked up last year. And it doesn't look like I, we're not going to spend that, that, that money from this As far as, if you go to the detail under the capital for equipment, if you see a zero anywhere, that means it was an ask and part of the process with the mayor, it got taken out of the budget and we're fine with that. As I told the mayor, if I never had anything to start with, I didn't have a loss, I didn't necessarily gain anything, but I didn't lose anything, we understand. But we do have in here a used F five fifty truck from the state yard at forty thousand dollars, a new F two fifty long wheel base, which is a replacement vehicle. And one of the things that's kind of a must have is a new laser paint machine for striping. We do so much of the maintenance of our downtime parking and our paint machine is just shot, I'll just tell you. And then twelve thousand dollars for a new bush hog back wing rotary mower. And then this is one of those things that's been an ongoing project with us is we'd like to add a hundred and twenty barricades to our parade route barricades at thirteen thousand five hundred, as well as for sixty-five hundred, an additional trailer to handle those barricades. And then this is one of those deals that the deal was too good to give up. The gas department has a CAT topiler backhoe, a four twenty F that is coming off of lease that has a guaranteed buyout for less than fifty thousand dollars. And it has less than twelve hundred hours on it and it's worth that, every bit of that. And we, we would like to replace one of our older backhoes with that coming off lease backhoe. CAT really would like you to return it to them because they'll sell it for more than fifty thousand dollars on the open market, but it is our recommendation that we keep that and, and, and pay that buyout for the, the end of lease purchase. That's kind of street in a nutshell. I'll be glad to answer any specific line items. Everything else is pretty much routine.
Richard, the, it's pretty straightforward. I do, I do see some pretty large percentage increases though, you, you do mention in the, the city's growing, there's an additional intersection, you know, every six months that we have to plant flowers in and maintain. But the, the flower budget went up by twenty-three percent and the street material and landscaping budget went up by twenty-three percent. And, you know, that's a pretty big year over year. I mean, I can see five, six, seven, eight consistent with revenues, revenue projection along the line, everybody at the table is predicted at five percent. So why the tremendous increase? Why the twenty-three percent? That's a fourth of what we're doing now.
You know, my directive to those supervisors when they work on these numbers and, and, you know, Paul Merchant, who's our horticulturist, prepared the flower budget and of course Arthur, George and, and Paul worked together on the combined street material landscape, you know, and, and, you know, based upon trends, those were the numbers that they proposed. Are they probably generous? Yes, if you feel that it would be worthy for us to revisit them and see if we can trim out of there. That is, you know, something that we definitely do. I think the tough thing with flowers is the number is pretty much going to kind of be what it is. You know, some of this is a commodity based thing, you know, Paul has already ordered tulips because of the, the fact that you have to get them in and put them in the refrigeration and things of that nature or is in that process. So you're, you're, you're making plans based upon not knowing what the, the actual numbers are until you get those orders into a vendor. But I'll be glad to go back and sit down with my folks and revisit those numbers.
Let me just give you another alarming number. And this is kind of a, you know, when we talk about trends and understand market, you know, changes and, and they kind of are what they are, but when I look at the street material, street material and landscaping, twenty seventeen actuals to twenty twenty proposed budget, a one hundred and thirty-nine percent increase.
Is it because you were detailed, is there more detail? I don't have in front of me.
No, we really didn't. I mean, we, we can get in there and I, I can dissect that better for you. I will give you a real world example. Our in place bid for, for pipe, concrete reinforced pipe, our bid that we had in place that, that they would not renew, forty-eight inch pipe, the price was fifty-one dollars and fifty cents a foot. We went back out for bid and that price for that same forty-eight inch pipe went up to seventy-two fifty a foot, okay? And we had you reject that bid because we knew Sarpsy was bidding out pipe and we could join that bid. Well, they did a little better, they got seventy-one dollars and fifty cents a foot, okay? That is what we're seeing. I, I had the buyers come to me the other day talking about concrete because they slipped in a delivery charge for loads less than five yards of concrete. And sometimes when you're doing a, even a couple of sidewalk repairs, you still only need a yard or two. When you add in the, the extra delivery charge for small loads, our cost per yard of concrete was up to like a hundred and sixty-four dollars a yard, okay?
Mine's a two twelve.
Hmm?
Mine's a two twelve.
Two twelve, okay. So, and, and understand, when I got here two years ago, our average concrete price, price was a hundred and five dollars a yard. That, that's, that's, those are realities and so that's some of those drivers.
The number you gave was, it went up eighty percent.
Yeah, so the problem is the market's hot out there and those in the building trades know this is that they're, they're.
And I guess that's like a local commodity, you don't ship concrete across the country, it just costs too much, right?
That's right.
Paid locally.
Especially the quickcrete, here's the most amazing thing, the low priced concrete pipe is being made in Columbus, Georgia and still be delivered here at the lowest price. Go figure, I, don't tell me how that works. So let me, I'll be glad to look at those and I can sit down with the mayor. I mean, I, I'm not saying there's not room to, to move on there. You know, again, I'm, I'm kind of a bottom line guy and I know that, that being mindful of, of inflation and growth that four percent, we're trying to be closer to three percent in, in that category, I think there's some room to work there.
I did go back and look at the detail and it looks like there were two Ammons and Blackman invoices that got coded here.
Okay.
That probably should have been put to the capital projects fund.
Okay.
For the resurfacing. And then there was one for the bulkhead repair.
Okay.
I'm not real sure that it needs to go in here either.
No, that was, should have been standalone. Now, part of the Ammons and Blackman last year is that they did a bunch of street striping that was not associated with, they didn't actually resurface the road, they just striped the seats. So we did charge that, that was a, a, a street materials cost, that's a normal maintenance
See, it's minimum is five yards?
Anything less than five yards, they pop us with a hundred and fifty dollar delivery, additional delivery charge. And that's for one location. If we make them move the truck more than a few feet, they technically could pop us for an additional.
Just thinking about that. What other?
Might be a good reason to get a heavy hand on your estimate.
Well.
Two yards, that's two, that's two and three, three yards.
Well, and, and one of the things that George and I have talked about is, is that, you know, wheeled loaders are handy, handy tools and there's nothing that says, stop the truck here, we'll put a couple of yards in the bucket and run it down to this project and keep doing that until we get over five yards. So where, we've been trying hard when we're doing concrete work to try to get enough projects in a reasonable location to exceed five yards. Because even if you waste a yard of it, you still come out ahead.
Oh, absolutely.
If you'd like to go on to sanitation, just a reminder there, if you look at what was budgeted last year versus this year, that's a decrease.
I'll get everybody calling up in just a moment. No, it's fine, you're fine. So sanitation, zero, zero, fourteen hundred. And also pays eighteen thousand.
And even though the, Jill and I talked about this afternoon and, and we feel confident that, that we may have had a little blown number in twenty nineteen, the actual salaries are down a little bit from last year as far as budgeted. And please note that that does include converting those four existing positions to crew leaders, which is a, the impact of eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars to the budget. So feel good about that. Everything else, again, really nothing to point out to you. You know, we do have the, the, the landfill charges are a little bit reflective out there. It looks like our, our projected is about two eighty-eight and we're still holding at three fifty, but that's just one of those things is that it's a hard one to gauge because we're adding anywhere between twenty and thirty new customers a month. So we, we know our tonnage goes up every month that goes forward, we just don't really can get a handle on that growth rate. So, you know, we've, we've been very efficient with the equipment that you have provided for us. And probably the biggest thing for you to consider when you go to the detail of the five oh four seventy account, which is capital equipment, there are four pieces of solid waste equipment that are listed there that shows zero impact budget. This is, as you know, and Kim has been very helpful in this area as well. This is equipment that we recommend that we procure, that we procure through a three year lease to own through a local bank. Here, here is, here is the, the reality that we're living in. If, if this, any piece of these equipments are included in this budget and we order it as soon as the budget is passed, we have been seeing a trend of anywhere from fourteen to eighteen months before it's physically delivered here. That's, that's the reality of the marketplace out there. And the problem is, we don't need this equipment today, but we are going to need this equipment in a year and a half. That, that is, that is, that is the challenge that we're dealing with. The other thing is the leases are due in arrears. So if it's delivered fourteen months from the time that the budget is passed and the lease is instituted, the first payment is not due to twelve months after that closing of the, of the delivery of the equipment. So Kim is very mindful of future budget impacts and we're going to have to be mindful of that too. But we are recommending those procurement. If there needs to be one dropped off, one of the trash trucks could be sacrificial and we'll visit again next budget year. I do want to note that we've got a real problem with our landfill. We're using a pretty light duty D five bulldozer that's not that old, but we are, we are, it's having issues because it's repeatedly sustaining damage and we're recommending replacing it with a, a D six with the landfill package on it. And we feel pretty strongly that the, the value, and we got CAT to kind of give us a value of the D six is between fifty-five and seventy-five thousand dollars, or the D five that we would replace, be replaced by the D six. And, you know, that would help offset that budgetary cost of servicing that, that, that lease to own purchase.
Is that high wheel really necessary to this, you know, a year or two ago and, and after pressing a person, they didn't feel the, the high wheel was absolutely necessary?
Well, the, the challenge that I understand and, and, you know, as you know, our mechanical maintenance supervisor was, was very involved with Caterpillar as an employee for many years before he came to work for us. The, the, to get a bulldozer that has a landfill protection package on it, that's the skid plates, the grill protection, the cab protection, everything else, you've got to go to the D six model. And, and his comment to me was, I'm going to take him as expert, if you're going to go to the D six, go to the high wheel because that's what it's designed for, that type of service life. And, you know, my position is this is a fifteen to twenty year purchase, meaning that, that if we take care of this piece of equipment, it's the right equipment for the job, it sees that landfill to close out. And there's no, no need that that piece of equipment should be replaced in, in my career lifetime with the city. Again, we can continue to use the piece of equipment we have and if that's something that has to be taken out of the budget, we understand. Again, as I told the mayor, if, if, it's not a loss if I never had it in the first place, but we are using the wrong piece of equipment that's not heavy duty enough and does not have the equipment protection for the limb pushing and things that we're doing. And we have replaced parts on that tri, on that, that bulldozer, we probably shouldn't have because we're not using it for the right application. It's a machine designed for grading and site work and things of that nature.
So council, I just added up all the.
About three hundred thousand of the years.
Well, it was seven hundred and six thousand dollars if you only count the one year payment, the first year payment of the bulldozer. Were those payments, Jimmy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm counting all, all four of the pieces on lease and I'm coming up with right around three hundred thousand a year.
I'll put the total cost in. I put the total cost in seven, for the first three and then for the last one, I put just one paper. I didn't, you got it by year? It was how much, three hundred?
Yeah, it was.
It was four items.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Right around three hundred and four.
Three hundred and ten, two hundred.
It was ninety-four, then there were two at about fifty and then the last one was four hundred.
Well, two hundred, about, about three, three thirty-one, somewhere right around there. We're talking about a garbage truck, two trash trucks and a, and a D six dozer with landfill operations.
Four hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Sanitation, yeah.
Four hundred and thirty-five thousand a year for the next several years that would have to be budgeted.
Two hundred, no, three thirty-one.
Yeah, that sounds more, more like three thirty-one. It's ninety-five, it's basically ninety-five, fifty-five, fifty-five.
One thirty-five, three thirty-five. I have a picture of that, and a two hundred thousand.
So what other, I guess we'd need to see what other departments do we have, do we have leases in and kind of have an idea of what we would be committing to overall? Because that, that, you know, it shows up as, you know, zeros this year.
Right.
And then. May even show up as zeros next year, depending upon when.
The timing of delivery, but, but you're committed to down the road.
What we have to talk about now, because he's putting in here based on demand and doing two days a week. So this is when you also talk about one day a week. And then you would need, if you went to one day a week, what would your, what would it need?
If we went to one day a week, basically, we, we probably could freeze procurement of, now this, you know, I understand one day a week only affects the garbage operation. So that's, that's the, the top line, that is the auto garbage truck. One day a week would probably freeze purchasing of garbage trucks for several, several years. Because I understand is that if you think about a route and we divide it, we, we visit every residential unit twice a week. So basically you theoretically have twice the number of trucks that you actually need to visit twice a week. But also remember, if you go to one day a week, the volume doesn't change, meaning that people throw away what they throw away in a given week. They may divide it in two halves, they may only put their can out once a week, whatever. Volume doesn't change. So you, so the, the, it's, it's not a complete one for one exchange, meaning, but you do get the efficiency of the fact that you're not putting as many miles on the truck and theoretically not as many hours because you still have to drive by every residence whether there's a can out. But your volume is, is going to be the same and continue to grow based upon customer growth. So what is, what is, what does that project your current fleet out to? It probably gives you a thirty-three percent instant boost, meaning that, that not, not fifty, not, not, not a half, but, but a third projection forward and meaning that you, you probably could freeze and not have. freeze and not have to replace anything, or have to buy anything for several budget cycles. That, that would be, you know, without spending some detailed analysis on it.
Another way to look at those numbers, if you went with all four of those, per capita purchases would be, if it was an annual cost of three thirty-five, and if I just go back to the bulldozer and making three payments on it, but buying the others outright, you're seven hundred and six thousand. You could almost, you know, budget it over two years and have, you know, have everything paid for except the dozer. That's another way to look at it.
And, you know, and, and of course, these are listed in order operations. If, if we had to make, you know, per-year guidance, a garbage truck and a trash truck, and then we, we can always hold the other two items to discuss this time next year. I mean, nothing, you know, again, we can continue to do what we're doing with the bulldozer we have, and, and deal with the, with the, the associated challenges with that. And, you know, again, right now, today, we have enough trash truck capacity. Our concern is a year from the day. And so the, the, the challenge that we have is we gotta order, knowing that right now, the lead time on delivery is anywhere from fourteen to eighteen months. And just to give you perspective, we just took delivery of a 2017 budgeted garbage truck. Okay? So just to kinda give you that, these are just real-world factors that business is good out there for the manufacturers, and you get in line. So.
I don't, I don't disagree that it doesn't need to be in the budget, but for planning purposes, it worries me a little bit that it's not, it's some number, some placeholder's not in the budget, because when you get to next year, and it goes up by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're gonna be saying, oh-oh, where do we cut to fit that in? It, I, I just, even if we don't spend a nickel, I kinda wish we had a line in there, or actually bump that line up to something more reasonable.
And I, I consider all those leases to be debt, too, so. I mean, I know we were trying to.
They don't go as debt on the books, but.
That's why I was trying to spread it over two years, and you don't know.
Right.
And in your third year, you don't have that, you don't have any payment. That lasts, what, four, five years?
Uh, our frontline garbage truck, our goal is seven years on the frontline, and at least a year to two years on reserve capacity.
So are these all leased to own?
Yes. You know, and, and no more than a three, we, we, it was amazing, on the bulldozer, the five-year costs more than the three, than the, than the four-year, so I didn't even put that on there. It wasn't even an option. So, yes, all these are, are zero payment at the conclusion of the last lease payment, meaning you own it outright. It's a financed own. And, and I, I do know that Kim is highly aware of our commitments, and, and I don't know how, how we best keep you guys informed of where, where our commitments, when they come due, and that kinda thing. But they, they, they are there, and they will be incorporated into budgets as we go forward, and we'll have to, you know, account for those at that time.
Let me ask you this, and, and if you, if you're talking that we would order something now and not realize that cost for a year, year and a half, two years, are there any purchases that need to be showing up in years, expenditures that were, for orders that were made a year or a year and a half ago?
Seventeen did we show up?
Yeah. So meaning that, that this time next year, the debt service on the truck we just got will be accounted for in the budget. If that's the correct statement. So, yeah. So, I mean, we, we are going to be, you know, the piper will be paid, but you, we can't show it in the budget until we, it, it's physically due. And that's been a, it's been a tough thing to manage, because it, it sure looks rosy on paper, but, yeah, the, the.
Is that gonna be due in the next, what?
It's gonna be a transfer. You'll see it as a transfer going out to lease, it's in the budget. Like, the trucks that have just come in this year, since I've been here, there's been three trucks to come in. One of those trucks, we're just not doing the financing, so you won't see it on this year, but you'll see transfers going out to capital lease payments. Cause those are set up as, as a debt into a separate fund, and we'll be transferring those, that money's out.
So, yeah, if you, if you look at the budget actuals for 2019, it's seventy-seven thousand. Is that real? And then for 2020, the proposal is thirty-four thousand, two hundred. I gotta believe we're blowing those numbers out of the water.
Well, and, and that's, and that's kind of a Kim and Jill way to explain it, but when you look at the, we're, well, all I can do is, is say, this is the need, and this is the recommendation, but what you're seeing in, in, in those numbers is that you're seeing a outright purchase of an F-two-fifty, and a five thousand dollars for an eight-hundred-pound capacity ice maker. And I'm trying to think what else that adds up to thirty-three thousand. And we need to find out where the, there's twelve hundred, and then there's twelve hundred dollars for the new network switches. So that's, so you add those three numbers, that comes up to that, that's where that number came from. So.
And the sanitation department needs eight hundred pounds of ice per day for what?
We don't have access to an ice maker right now. The one that was in the, in the outdoor garage died. So, and gas is getting mad at us for robbing all their ice on a regular basis. So, and it is hot out there during the summertime.
Counsel, I think that, I think that the purchasing vehicles and equipment number looks kinda lean. Concerned that's gonna come in. When these bills hit, that number's not gonna be real.
Yeah, I see stuff sitting in encumbrances and wrecks, um, out there in the system. It's just an outstanding purchase order that has been made, but I don't know. Kim, have you seen invoices come in for those?
No, I just need to, I need to make sure that was, that was encumbered, so it may still be in the.
So that seventy-seven, you know, I had to take it as of the time the budget was put together, but I think we've had some stuff transpired since, so definitely need to look at that seventy-seven.
Yeah, that number's gotta be, that definitely gotta be massaged. And then, as I said, do we, do we, and then you look at our, well, actually, to make, to make the 2020 numbers look better, I, I guess that we have enough money to cover the 2019 actions. But because we know we're gonna have some orders from previous years show up in 2020, I don't think the thirty-four-two is necessarily a reasonable number.
Yeah, we're gonna look at both of those. We get with Kim and see what invoices have come in, if we've had any invoices come in.
Richard, back to the, I'll change gears again, on the landfill charges.
Mm-hmm.
Our 2019 projected actual is pretty good compared to, to budget. But is that just uncertainty in the market that that goes back up to the, to 2019 budgeted number, roughly?
Yeah, I, I think there's a little sandbagging on our part on that. I mean.
Just feel, just for whatever reason, it was low this year, and wanna kinda keep that budget number high. And that's one of those, it is, it's gonna be what it is.
You know, you're seeing about, you know, that four to five percent growth, which is about what our customer growth rate is, which the tonnage should be reflective of that. And the good news is with at least the, the county landfills, those are pretty set prices that don't fluctuate. So.
Well, the, but the proposed budget number over the actual is a twenty-one and a half percent increase.
Yeah, and I, I think that is just a, a cautionary number. I mean, it's one of those things, it, it, you know, and council, it's one of those things that you hate to say it, the, the, the amount of garbage that we collect, solid waste, that has to be landfill, is, is going to be what it is. We cannot, you know, so it, so again, if that's a number that you would, you know, say, hey, the trend looks like it's increasing about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and it looks like it needs to be three oh-five or whatever. Again, there's no, there's no punitive damage to us if we pick that number, because at the end of the day, whatever we take across the scales is what, what we're gonna pay.
Well, actually, our 2019 actuals are almost equal to our 2017 actuals. And I don't know if that's a trend of less waste, maybe more recycling.
Better diversion, yeah. And Jill, she explained this to me one time, and apparently I wasn't a good student. The, the projected, how does the computer come up with that number? Is it just looking at a trend line? It's, it's?
The trend, and then you add how many days are left.
I guess looking at encumbrances and the wrecks that are sitting out there.
Okay.
It's not exact, but it's.
You know, so in nineteen, our actuals was two sixty-seven. It looks like we're heading for two eighty-eight. So that's about a twenty thousand dollar increase, which when you think about our growth of our, our customer base, that's probably right in line with that growth line, you know?
It's a reduction from 2018, which is, which is a good trend.
Yeah, I didn't even look, I didn't go all that, I don't know what we did in 2018. We were.
Two ninety-four.
Yeah.
We did start in 2019, giving away the recycled with the, in other words, you don't have to, to ask for it. You get it with your garbage can. So I think that, maybe.
Yeah, I was just looking at.
That's something really positive.
Yeah.
Which ain't right about.
The fact that we're growing, our tonnage is not reflecting that, that, that means we got good stewards of, of our customers. Yeah.
Quite possible is part of it.
Yeah, definitely.
And again, I, I, if that's one of those numbers that, that we can massage, I don't think there's a, there's a harm in doing that. So.
Yeah, we can lower that.
Well, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you, because I'm kinda thinking that that purchases of vehicle and equipment's gonna need to go up.
Very good. Yes, sir.
Might wanna help yourself out. Of course, as soon as we do that, you'll, landfill charges will go up twenty percent. And I'll blame Jay for blowing that number off the fences.
Fair enough.
So there's savings if you go to one day a week besides just the extended, where, or extended time on the vehicles?
Last days where people complain about.
We wouldn't buy another, I mean, the, the, the purchase would go down. About thirty percent.
Right, but what about the operation? I mean, people fuel, I mean.
Unless, unless have the, the obvious conversation, is, is that if you went to two-day, from two days a week residential service to one day, you automatically wake up and you have a garbage workforce that is too big for the demand. Cause I understand, we are auto-operation, meaning that, that, that there's one man in a truck running an auto collection system. Now, the, the, the fact is, is that now, where you've had two days to visit every customer, you have four days. Okay? So you have that, that one man, that one-man unit and one-man unit truck, has twice the ability, eight hours a day, sixteen additional hours in a week. So then the question is, what do you do with this workforce? Well, I, I went through this in Daphne, and, and we were able to absorb them, meaning that when, when openings came in other departments, those individuals were transferred, and we, we shrunk the workforce. Okay? We didn't lay anybody off, we didn't rift anybody, we absorbed them, parks and rec, wherever, you know, tried to get them placed to, to do that. In time, you, you theoretically, by going to one day, would shrink your workforce in the garbage section by some calculated percentage based upon, you know, because I understand is that the same employee today has to visit on his route, his route's houses twice, where all of a sudden, he's only gonna have one. So he's got four days to do what he used to have to do in two days. Now, here's the, here's the challenge. He's gonna have more cycles back to the transfer station, cause his truck's gonna fill up faster, because theoretically, he's gonna have the same volume, you know, so, so you, you gotta, you gotta look at it. So it's not, it's not a one-for-one exchange, but there is definitely a potential for reduction there. And, you know, this is one of those, I mean, I'm proud to say that I, I think we, we work very hard, and I think we achieve a high-quality service to our customers. And I will tell you, twice a week is a luxury in most communities, cause I, I can't name too terribly many. I think the, the last one in Ballin County is Baymanet, and there's rumor they're getting ready to go to once a week. Okay? Now, I don't have that confirmed. And, you know, you have to, you have to reach out and, and weigh hearts in mind. I have once a week where I live, and my wife and I know that shrimp shells go in the freezer in a bag, and you put them in the morning, a pickup day, cause if you put them in seven days in August, your, your can's gonna stink. Okay? You gotta, you, you know, but, but.
You know, I think that this council, and mayor, and everybody at this table is a good cross-section of our community. I'd like to hear what, you know, and I, what, what your garbage pickup looks like. I'll start. Mine is, sometimes I don't put my garbage can out one day a week. Sometimes I only need to try, I mean, of course, Christmas is, things, holidays are exceptions.
We could, we could add on Christmas.
But, yeah, but I, truly, my garbage can is, sometimes it's full, sometimes it's not. Friday, I didn't even have to put it out. I don't even think there was a bag in there. My recycling load has increased considerably. You know, I usually have two, one I just donated. It's a great big huge bucket with a Fairhope recycling sticker on it. It's full almost every week, and so is the smaller bin. So I know that we've converted over to more recycling, but I do have concerns about tipping fees on recycling now as well, and what's going on with all of that, if that's really, you know, trying to be a good steward, is it really going to where it's supposed to go? But I'd like to hear from everybody else what, what their garbage looks like.
I would say ninety percent of the time, we only put out once a week. And when we do, we still don't even fill it up. So.
Ninety percent of the time?
Yeah, man, I probably very rarely gotta take it out twice a week, cause it's not full.
You're like, I have a baby.
I've got a lot of garbage in there.
You have a baby.
And it's dirty diapers, and it smells, and I can't get it.
Can you put them in the freezer, though?
I would recommend that.
We've been night-gone, baggy freezer optional dirty diapers.
I have five cats.
We don't take anything off the table.
It's a struggle. But I, when we lived on Pier, once a week, occasionally twice, but once a week.
If we don't, and we don't always remember, we do forget sometimes to take it out that second day. And if we do, we are, we have a backlog.
What size receptacle do you have? The larger or the smaller?
The large.
You have the large. And what about your recyclable?
My wife handles that.
There we go. There we go.
I think this would incentivize more recycling.
Buckets in my yard.
Our lid was pretty much straight up in the air from all the garbage, and wooden clothes. But we have once a week.
Twice a week?
Once a week.
Mayor, what you, do you?
Mine's mostly once a week, but I mean, ours is commercial now, now that I live upstairs. So, I mean, we pick up every day.
Yeah, and, and with our backdoor service in the central business district, that, that services.
Commercial garbage is going to your commercial pickup?
No, I'm just saying.
She pays more for it.
It's, it's all, it's all part of the same.
Commercial rates higher than residential, so.
Garbage cans, but it's, it's all, it's mostly commercial.
You know, and I, I don't think that's something that has to be discussed today, but I'll be glad to try to put some things out on paper and kinda show you, you know, what, it, what the ramifications of that transition, and what the potential savings. And there, there will be operation saves. I understand the, you know, the, the rolling hours on those pieces of equipment. I mean, if you, the mayor's had this, this experience of becoming mayor, is if you wanna know what a brake job on a, a twenty-eight, or twenty-four-yard garbage truck is, and understand it goes through about four sets of brakes a year. Okay? Well, all of a sudden, if you're not visiting every house twice a week, you're only doing it once a week, you're gonna have some inherent savings. Those brake pads and those wear items are gonna last longer. And, and I think the average truck runs about forty-five hundred dollars just in parts to, 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 to reshu them. That, that is a reality. And if you're doing that four times a year, and all of a sudden it drops to three or two and a half, there's an inherent savings there. If you can reduce, you know, as, and, and I don't wanna scare people watching and listening, especially employees, if, if you can have a reduction enforced through attrition, and all of a sudden your garbage staff goes from X to X minus thirty-three percent, as you know, the driver and our operational expenses or salaries and all the benefits go with it. So that, that, that would be a savings that would come with time.
In that department, is that part of your higher turnover?
Uh, generally sanitation has a, a high turnover, cause the starting level jobs there aren't, aren't luxury jobs. I'll just tell you, and, and it's not for everybody. But, yeah. But understand, you know, trash and recycle is not impacted by this. Landfill and transfer is not impacted because the volume doesn't change. You're just, it's the, the number of times that you go to pick up that same volume. Volume is the same, it's just.
I think recycling will increase.
Uh, yes.
I think it might if you go to.
I think so.
And, and, and I'll tell you.
Make up room somewhere else.
My, our past experience, my past experience is when that transition occurred, we, one, made sure your garbage and your recycle day wasn't the same day. So our comment was, we do give you still twice a week service. You have recycle on one day, you have garbage on the other. And if you're careful, you know, just, if you really look at your garbage string, how much of it's actually recyclable, you, you get twice a week service at the curbside. And they tend to pull that argument pretty good. Now, you know, I'm not gonna say that there weren't folks that were upset, and, and there was a little heat that came a, a part of that when that conversion take place. But, you know, after a year, no one remembered twice a week garbage. I mean, you know, and I, and I'll. no one remembered twice a week garbage. I mean, you know, and, and I'll tell you, if you have a ninety-six gallon can, I've got a family of five, I, I, I think Christmas is about the only time that it's, it's full. You know, the rest of the time, it's usually less than three quarters full at the most. So.
My can's out there every Sunday and every third.
Oh, wait. Full?
No, sir. Not even close.
You just throw it out there.
You just throw it out there for the dirty doctors and the shrimp.
You have to, at that, you have to talk to a wife back. She does take it out there every night. But it's never full. I don't see the reason why, you know, and then sometimes we won't take it because there's really nothing in it.
How about your recycling?
It's gonna add. I can tell you that we're starting a whole lot more to make sure.
Cost, it's costly.
Hey, I gotta get a bigger bike, bigger container.
Correct, Richard.
Well, with, with the trend right now, yeah, recycling's a little expensive to process.
It's costly to recycle, so.
It, it'll cost us to fill our landfill, too.
I'm very concerned with tippy reason recycling. Well, I'm, I'm very concerned with that, but.
I think our landfill's more valuable.
Well, it's, 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 it's a tough thing. You know, I, I don't want to be too, the glass is half full, but, but, you know, they keep telling us that, 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 that pattern is going to reverse. You know, unfortunately, they said about eighteen months, eighteen months ago, it hadn't happened yet. So maybe, you know, may, maybe we see a change there. By no means am I wishing for fuel costs to go up because that's one of the, lower fuel cost makes recycle harder to recycle. But hopefully, we'll see at least a moderation and maybe a change in the other direction there.
Are we playing those commodities now? Say, are we, are we stockpiling our plastics or our paper or our metals waiting for the market to go up?
Generally on, on, definitely on the cardboard right now, because, but, but it's still, it's at forty-five dollars a ton, I think, and we were at a hundred and twenty-five ton a year and a half ago. So, but you have a certain capacity. And the good news is, we do have a buyer for our cardboard. Our metals, we do fine with. I was watching them load the bins today, and, and that, that's bringing in reasonable, good money, and, and that market seems to be steady. The, the plastics are going to ECUA because one good thing's about plastic, it's light. So if we're paying per ton, that's one of the lightest materials in there. If we can get the heavy stuff out, metals and, and.
Is going to where?
To ECUA's Murph over in Canton. It's, it's their recycle, that's who we have the contract.
Recycle.
Yes.
And they're buying it, or we just have it?
No, we're paying them to take it right now.
Paying them to take our.
Yes, yes. And other mixed recycles that, that, that don't have a market out there on the commodity.
There's just no market.
There, there is a value for all of this, though.
Guys that clean the ocean. Sold five hundred, sold five hundred thousand tons of.
HDP plastic, I saw that, yeah.
Bracelets and necklaces.
Yeah, we, we have those bracelets.
Well, so, plastic market, no end in sight for that?
No. And, you know, and.
So we're just recycling that?
We're, we're, we're.
We're being good stewards of the.
It was happening. I saw a story where some of the foreign countries stopped receiving it.
Yes, that, that's.
They've got so much plastic, they didn't take any more.
They're changing policy, too.
Yeah.
That'll, I think, eventually happen.
And what's paper doing?
Uh, mixed paper's not worth the hoot, but it's, it's about, it's, it's neutral, meaning they'll take it, but they don't give us anything for it.
Only thing we're having to pay then is for plastic.
Well, what we consider, the, the, the single stream, this, the, the oddball stuff that may have the Walmart bags in it, the film, things that are problematic, we're, we're keeping glass pretty much out of, out of the stream, and we've got a process for that. The worst case on glass has been, we had to pay the freight to get it hauled to Atlanta, which wasn't terribly bad. The time before that, it was a even Steven deal, meaning they hauled it off, and they didn't pay us anything, and we didn't pay them anything. So, uh, and, but the nice thing about glass, we can stockpile it. It's inert. It can sit outside. It doesn't get harmed by the weather, and we can wait until we get the best deal we can get on that. So.
So it sounds like the recycling is still working, and we're just not making, we're not offsetting.
No.
The cost as much as we used to, but it's certainly cheaper than filling a landfill.
I just think it's, it has a, a value that you might not be able to see in dollars and cents, but it has a very big value.
You know, we're, 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 as, as Mr. Brown pointed out, we're kind of in that gray area of what is socially and environmentally responsible to what compared is, is, is financially responsible. I, I will tell you, if, if you said, Richard, recommend what we do based purely on the bottom line, it would be cheaper to take our recyclables that we're taking to ECUA to take them to Magnolia Landfield and landfill them. But the problem is, that is not socially or environmentally responsible. So that, that is the.
But that's the only item, though, right?
It, 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 well, it, plastics is, 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 from a volume standpoint, and plastic takes up a lot of volume, it doesn't have any weight to it. But, you know, part of our goals to be as responsible is trying to not handle the material any more than necessary, because when you start tying a lot of labor into that, then you're just digging the hole deeper for it. So we're trying to be efficient in, in that process.
Well, back to that on, on a bigger picture, I mean, at the rate that city's growing and the surrounding area's growing, if we continue with the two-day-a-week service, it won't be long before you've hit capacity there, and then you're adding additional staff and team in order to continue providing two days a week service.
Well, that, that's what you're seeing the driver here, is you're seeing an ass for a garbage truck. It's a very expensive piece of equipment. And, and we're asking for it today because we realize that it does come online to probably, realistically, earliest twelve months from today, and realistically, eighteen months from today, when we know that we've got to a piece of equipment that is at, at the end of its service life that needs to be replaced and everything else. At this point in time, we, I haven't, I haven't spent too much time looking at twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. These are replacement equipment that we're talking about here. We're not adding personnel to go with them. But yes, the, the reality of it is, is that as we add customers, and, you know, overtime is a, is a, is a big number in this, and, and part of that growth that we deal with ends up being covered by overtime. And there's a point in time that overtime is cheaper than adding a person. Okay? But eventually, overtime starts not being the better value to adding the person. So you, you know, that's where we, we'll sit down with you at that time and say, all right, we've got to add staff in this area because we have two hundred and forty more customers than we did a year ago, and we have four hundred and eighty more than we did two years ago, and, and we've got to establish another route. And, you know, and just to kind of give you an idea, the typical maximum number that one person and one truck can handle is about that seven hundred to eight hundred a day. So if you start looking our, you know, and, and there was one point in time, we had, I think in twenty seventeen, we added four hundred customers. So if we stay on that trend, that means that we were, you know, we were needing one more day after two years of a truck and a person. And, you know, we cover that by spreading the route out, spanning this route, contracting that one based upon number of customers, and running that route to its complete, which may run into an hour or two of overtime on that shift until, until that service is complete.
You have made this very interesting, that we have talked this long about garbage pickup.
Well, I, you know.
It's fascinating.
And I think all you gentlemen and, and ladies at the table, it, it's, it's, it's a puzzle. You know, how, how, you know, because the most interesting thing is that if, if we're, if we're building a new sidewalk, and we get to a point in the time of the day, we say, okay, we'll stop here and we'll pick up on it tomorrow. Well, the problem is, if, if this route is due to be picked on Monday, we don't have the option to say, oh, we'll get to it Tuesday. Because what happens Tuesday is Tuesday's route had to be picked up. So every day, sanitation wakes up, and they know what they have to get done. Trash is a little more flexible. If we didn't get to you, we'll pick right up where we left off next day. But garbage, you know, it's, it's pretty, uh, it's, you know, again, customers expect to be serviced, and if we miss them, boy, we'll hear from them.
I want to give you guys another tidbit. You got, you got to do it already. The net loss from the sanitation is eighteen percent.
And, and.
And that's with no, that's not with the, that's with the purchases of vehicles and equipment being that really low, low number. With the landfill charging, it may be a high number, but I, I think the purchase of a vehicle and equipment's going to be much, much higher than that.
So you throw in, say, seventy-seven plus three-thirty the next year, then you're at four hundred plus additional.
Four hundred plus.
Negative to the bottom line.
Seven, seven, you'd be at a, you know, over a thirty, about a thirty-five percent.
I think.
That's why I think this is an inevitable decision that needs to be made.
And Councilman Brown, you're a man after my own heart, because I have it right here. Right now, based upon these budget numbers, our income is roughly eighty-two percent of our operating cost. I will tell you that municipal sanitation should be close to ninety percent. Now, why you say ninety? Well, understand, ten percent of what that department does is not directly related to sanitation. They support special events, they parade, Mardi Gras, they, heck, we got guys that help clean bathrooms on weekends and do park services and things like that. So we've got to understand, there's a ten percent value of their service to the greater city that's not directly related to customer service. And, you know, I didn't want to bring this up, but I did a little, little thing that, that, that probably this time next year, you would have me back here suggesting a, a, another rolling increase that's much smaller than the last one, that if you did approximately fifty cents per year for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and we can hold budgetary numbers, is that by twenty twenty-three, based upon a modest growth of twenty customers per month, we would be at roughly ninety-three percent of income to actual expenses, which is where we probably need to be. And the garbage fee in twenty twenty-three would be seventeen dollars and thirty cents, which would still be generally in the midpoint range of what comparable communities throughout our area pays. So, pardon?
Seventeen what?
Seventeen thirty. So if you, if you went fifty cents up in twenty twenty-one, it'd take you to sixteen thirty. Then another fifty cents in twenty twenty-two, it'd be sixteen eighty. And then another fifty cents in twenty twenty-three, it'd give you seventeen thirty. In my projection, we'd be around about eleven thousand customers at that point in time, at the, at a conservative growth rate.
A buck fifty over fifteen eighty?
Correct.
That'd be about a one-time increase. I know, you know.
Well, we just finished, or this is the third year.
Yes.
For a dollar.
Yes.
I understand that, but I mean, it's a service, it's not a, it's not a free service as we see.
No, and I, and I think it's a valued service. Yeah.
But I think that the one, the once a week is going to maintain those costs. I think that's inevitable. I mean, that's gonna.
I think we're headed there, too.
Yeah.
Well, and, and the only thing I would say there is, and I think that Dale and I need to sit down and, and kind of, kind of draw a flow chart of what that would look like in a timeline. You know, one, you, you got to have an outreach, you got to have an education, you got to establish your routes and things of that nature, divide everything back, re-divide everything back up. But I'll be glad to do some homework, get y'all something back. I, I think it's, it's, it's difficult to, in this budget process, to take this into consideration now, because I think there needs to be some, some, you, you need to have expectation that we're going to do some good planning, some for, good feasibility, some good forecasting, bring you back something that's measurable as far as metrics and numbers, and, and y'all kind of value check those to make sure we're not being too optimistic or too pessimistic. But it, it's definitely something to look at as a planning tool and for a future budgetary tool.
Think that it, the only thing it'll affect right now for this year would be just the future purchases, or when those purchases will hit.
I, we're going to be at an over twenty percent loss. I mean, we're going to be at a twenty-five percent loss. Mayor, can I ask you to, or can we collectively maybe ask you to maybe do some kind of survey? You know, ask people to be honest and say, how, how often, you know, are your cans full, or how often do you?
I think you need to.
I know it's going to be a change. People ask, and they're going to get in on.
Exactly. I think you took, you coupled with that.
Yeah.
Would you rather see an increase or go to one day? I'd much rather go to one day.
Right, because that's.
I'd have no problem going to one day. Making that work.
People are funny about the garbage.
They are?
No.
Yeah, but I think we can do that internally.
It's going to create a stir, but.
And, you know, I, I will tell you, that was, that was a pretty immediate effect. And Daphne went to once a day in two thousand and ten, and I think the first three years, there was a, a net income of average about two hundred and twenty-five thousand coming back to the general fund from the solid waste enterprise. And of course, as you know, diesel fuel went out the, out the window and everything else and that, and, but they were able to, there, they did not do a fee increase for over almost like ten years, uh, being able to absorb it by going to once a day. And then they started running deficit and had to, to look at, you know, adjusting fees. But there is, there, there will be a savings in operational cost, and ultimately, if you, if you do it and make sure you, you protect your employees, but get them homes in other parts of public works and, you know, public utilities where they're qualified, o- over a period of time to transition them, you will realize that savings. And again, I think we can, the one guarantee, whatever y'all decide, you know, we, we will work as hard as we can to ensure quality service to our customers. I mean, that's what we're going to do. And you can give great service once a day and, uh, once a week as opposed to twice and, um, be effective in that operation.
Do you think that it could potentially, if we go down to once a week since we just did a three-year, one-dollar increase, but of course, it hadn't been increased in a while, could we lower it a little, or is it just probably where it needs to be for once or twice a week?
Well, and if, you know, if, if, the easy comparison is Baldwin County, right now, it's sixteen bucks a week. You get once a week and twice a quarter trash, no recycle. And then there's sixteen. We're at fifteen eighty right now. We're giving them twice a week and once a week trash and, and recycle. I think that if we go to once a week, then we would need to hold the current fee and, and let the budget normalize, let the staff be adjusted over time and, and be able to evaluate operational costs, wear and tear and things like that. And I think you'll probably find that we're, we're pretty much close to being where we need to be, at least in the foreseeable future.
All right, council, we've got about maybe five or six minutes. We need to adjourn so we can start our meeting on time. We got five or six minutes. But does anybody have any important committee updates?
Let me give them very good.
Yeah.
You can address that during your council comments. Anybody have any budget comments?
I've got those sheets out, handed out. Everybody should have all paper put together, two that are stapled together. The last is just a sheet that just emailed from the mayor with account balances. I'm missing the last meeting, you know, just kind of the trend, looking back over, you know, this year's budget and then looking back at previous budgets of where the city is heading revenue versus expenses. You got that first sheet that says general government budget versus actual analysis for twenty twenty. I tried to simplify it a little bit. This is, this is only operational. I didn't get into appropriation. This is strictly operational for the years listed there. Numbers are all given on previous budgets and this year's budget as far as what the budget numbers and the actual for both revenues and the expenses. And basically, it's showing, uh, on that first sheet is from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, we budgeted revenues at a rate of nine point two-five percent increase, and they've only grown at five point five. So our revenues have been roughly half of what we projected they should be in our budgets. And expenses, the budget has gone up in, from seventeen to nineteen, seventeen percent, and the actual has been fifteen point six. So, you know, difference.
I was just going to say, it does need more explanation, but I mean, the, the budget and the, um, the revenue has been increasing every year. So just because it missed the budget doesn't mean that we're not doing well. We are increasing and balancing the budget every year, including the year that it shows that we're a negative. But did y'all get my, my, Matt email, and it had red comments about?
Well, I mean, you look, yeah, so to your point, Mary, if you look down at that bottom line, we've got expense versus revenue, actual, that's basically what the actual revenue versus expense, what the balance was at the end of the year. So twenty seventeen, you know, we were five million under budget. You know, that goes back to a lot of capital projects that might not have gotten done, or purchases weren't done that year, or, or whatever. But just the actual revenue versus actual expense, that's what was left. And you can see that going across. So those numbers look good. I'm just looking at the, the actual numbers and budget numbers, and their trend increasing.
But, but looking at budget numbers and actual numbers, you need to look at the trend for actual numbers, because these actual numbers are the city taking on its own expenses and weaning off the profits from the utility. And that's not going to be reflected in this. A, a budget is just that. I mean, and if you're going to be off and you're going to be running at a huge deficit, that's one thing. But we are balancing every single year.
These actual numbers reflect that change, right? From twenty seventeen, eighteen to nineteen, all the expenses were re-categorized.
Right.
Right.
And, but the transfer, for example, from utilities in two thousand and nineteen includes the purchase of the K-one center. So that's not operating expense. And, but the transfer, for example, from utilities in two thousand and nineteen includes the purchase of the K-one center, so that's not operating expense. That's actually purchasing something for community development, so that's why these figures have to be identified a little bit more. And I did send you all the notes from what council, uh, what you put together, Councilman Conyers, to show you, and I emailed it to y'all, I'm not sure if you looked at it. It had my notes in red.
Was that, was that today, or...
Oh, no, that was after the last meeting.
Okay.
Um, but basically broke down, you know, there, there's a difference in showing a transfer from utility that's going to operating the city budget, and transferring from utilities to make a purchase like the K-one center. I mean, there, it's two different expenses, so you can't just compare it to expenses and revenue.
Well, I, I agree, and that's kind of why I sent you that email about the, the sales tax revenue, you know, where is it, and you responded to us in operating.
Right. The, the only difference now is that when, when you had an appropriate or, or a reserve for capital purchases, I mean, all of that's doing is it's going to capital purchases when we're ready to make the purchase. It's not a necessary earmark. Sales tax income for almost every municipality is the number one source of income, and that is used to operate the budget. Now that debt has been paid off, any capital purchase that is in our budget can be paid out of the operating expense. When you earmark it and then you transfer that money out, and I think Kim can probably, you know, explain this better, it, it affects the bottom line. I mean, I, I guess it's just a municipal accounting thing, but, I mean, what you have in the twenty-twenty budget is the sales tax is going to operating, you know, the, the whole, the whole budget, and it is balanced based on that. Again, having earmarks for this and that, I, I recommend that if we had any, anything for sales tax, it would be reinvesting in the things that increase sales tax. Because when you do that, then you're going to hopefully ensure that you'll have a better result with those increases. But as far as looking at year-to-year budget, that's, that's how the budgets were done in the past. Looking at, we budgeted this compared to what we budgeted in the next year, that's not the way you do a budget. It's all on actuals. You know, and you, you evaluate where you're off, but those things were never done in the past until this term. It's all about giving y'all all the numbers, but you've got to look at actuals and actuals.
But I think that the, the, you know, I'm, I'm just looking at the trends of actuals, and I'm looking at the revenues going up five and a half percent the last, you know, four years. And I see expenses going up fifteen-point-six, so not exactly a three-times ratio, or a three-to-one ratio on the actual expense curve versus the revenue curve. So the, the, I don't know if this is what you were trying to say, but it's a little bit concerning that the expense curve is three times as steep as the revenue curve. And I, I also don't know if this is what you're trying to say, Robert, but I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but when you, when you take the money that was going to debt prepayment, and then you put it into operating, you know, that was, that was, that was really a cushion, and it was something that I was, I was hoping that when we got the debt paid off, we could, we could put back into the city for people to enjoy, and, and, you know, it's a lot of...
Well, you, you got to get it back to that point. I mean, you, you, when you've, you've taken, and that's why you've got to look at the past. If you go further back, uh, just from last term, it was way over fifty percent that we were taking from utilities. But to get from a state where you were taking that amount for utilities to not taking anything for operating, I mean, yes, your expenses are going to go up. Now it's just hopefully, you know, getting the, the revenue to catch up with it, but we are balancing the budget every year without taking utility profits that are needed for all of the upgrades. And any edit that we do at this point for the budget, depending on if we're adding money or, you know, or not, is, we're going to have to get it somewhere else, and, and that would rely on probably utility profits.
Or you can cut expenses. You don't have to get it from somewhere else. You just cut personnel or purchases.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what you have to look at. The, we're, we're putting these things in based on investing in the city to do better. When, when you put in a two-point-six-five million dollar purchase of park land after a budget's been presented with no communication with me or, or anybody in the city, that, that requires a lot more work on our part. And we don't have enough money in the, in the reserves. Borrowing money from the rainy day fund, I don't think is prudent, because it's there for an emergency. Reserves right now, we still have, and that's what I wanted to, to get on the schedule, um, we still have left gas to, to discuss, and then just all of the capital improvements.
I don't want to touch you off. We're, we're one minute till six. Let's adjourn, and we'll, we'll continue this discussion.